August 2, 2021. This is our afternoon meeting. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. One item on the agenda today, and we'll see what else we can come up with under other items. But our partnership with Portland General Electric Pelton Roundbutte Project. Is maybe a Zoom, yes?
Yeah, Commissioners, thank you. We've had PGE here several times in the past to provide just an update on what's going on with the Pelton Roundbutte project, associated with which we are signatories too. So it's been important for them to kind of keep the board abreast of the latest developments. It was two years ago, perhaps, we heard from them about water temperature study that they were doing and associated with the new fish passage equipment and apparatus that they've established there. So I think they're prepared today to provide you a further update on the goings on associated with the project and answer any other questions that you might have.
Great. So yeah, we have a couple of names here. Jim Mannion and Megan Hill may be available for joining us.
Yes, I'm Wendy Valise. I'm the Local Government Affairs Manager.
Hey Wendy.
And I'm happy. I'm super, we're super pleased to be here and provide an update. And the summary just provided was excellent. Thank you. I don't have to, I don't have to repeat it. With that, I do want to introduce Megan Hill, who will provide the presentation.
Great. So please stand by just one moment. So technology-wise, we have an introductory screen, it looks like up. There we go. That's what I was looking for. Welcome and thanks for joining us. Now we're all seeing each other on video also.
Awesome. All right, Megan, take it away.
And I have a presentation. Should I go ahead and share that or?
Yes, we do have copies of it here, but please share it. So this Zoom is our recorded meeting and anybody watching will be able to see the slides that way.
Is that working for you guys?
There we go. Yes, thank you.
All right, so for those of you who haven't met me, my name's Megan Hill and I am the Natural Resources Manager for Pelton Roundbutte here in Madras. And I live here in Bend. So I'm going to give a high-level update of what we've been up to. So just a quick refresher, and you already got a bit of this. You know, most of our work is based on our settlement agreement, which was reached in 2002 in Deschutes County, as well as local, state government, federal, tribal, and NGOs like Water Watch and Trail Unlimited all came together and kind of set the terms and conditions for our license with FERC. And so that's a 500-page agreement, lots of details, kind of boils down into these four high-level items. You know, generating power at the plant, providing recreational opportunities, returning sustainable harvestable runs of Chinook, Steelhead, and Sockeye to the Upper Deschutes, and then water set restoration to go along with that. As electricity generation, we are a pretty large project. It's about a 500-megawatt project, serves about 150,000 homes. In central Oregon, we employ 46 employees. Most of those, of course, are supporting the generation of electricity. Twelve of them work in my department on biological services and license compliance. And because of the things I'm going to talk about today, we are certified as low-impact hydro. Oh, yes, go for it. Did I hear a question?
Oh, there was a sneeze and there was, yeah, just a moment over here, yeah.
Blessing the sneeze.
Sounded like question. No problem. So one of the main things that we do are recreation. So we support 13 facilities, our recreational facilities. They kind of range from hiking trails to full-ground campgrounds like Pelton Park. The last year and a half, our focus has been, you know, meeting the extra visitation we're seeing post-COVID and people discovering more outdoor hobbies, as well as adapting for increased wildlife preparedness, making sure we have good evacuation plans and that kind of thing. But we're pleased to see, you know, increased visitation both last year and then this year in our parks. My main focus and our group's focus is on restoring Chinook, Steelhead, and Sockeye runs. You know, those, those fish were absent from the Upper Deschutes Basin for 45 years after construction of the dam. And currently today, we have 147 spring Chinook looking for spawning grounds and mates. And we'd expect them to spawn in September, so pretty soon here. On one hand, that's our record. Our previous record was 56 adult fish, adult Chinook above the dam. So we're pleased with that 147. It's also not our long-term goal by any means. Our goal is to get 1,000 fish per species returning every year. So we've got a long road ahead of us.
Question. Now we do have a question. Could I ask a question?
Of course.
At this point, how many, how many of the Chinook or Steelhead are, are fish that were hatched out in hatcheries and planted in the streams? And how much are fish that were, you know, kind of, you know, came from eggs that were laid in, in the Upper Deschutes streams and then grew up and went out and came back?
So at this point in the process, almost all of them are hatchery supplemented. So they're put out into the upper basin. They then come through the SWW at Roundbutte Dam. We pass them downstream. But they do start their life in a hatchery still. We have some natural production, but not at levels that are producing like measurable adult returns yet.
Thank you.
Long-term goal, though, is to get away from hatcheries to where the runs are self-sustaining. So as I mentioned, you know, 147 fish isn't going to get us there. And, you know, our run returns to date have been lower than our long-term goals. So we've been working as a fish committee, which is the group of state, federal, and tribal, as well as NGOs. There's 10 of those agencies that get together every other month at the project to kind of help guide our work going forward on reintroduction and water quality. And in 2019, we put together this like high-level plan for how we were going to improve reintroduction success and particularly, you know, getting more fish into the juvenile collector, the SWW, more adults back, and then, as you just mentioned, increasing the natural production to where they're spawning on their own and producing their own offspring. Don't have time to go through all these. If you go to the website, if you click on any one of those boxes, it brings up a one-page description of like that strategy and what we're doing. I was just going to hit on three, three items. Acclimation program, our efforts to improve fish habitat, and improve water quality. So acclimation is probably the thing I'm most excited about right now. This is a big collaborative program that's led by Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. This has to do with how we release, release the hatchery smolt. So when we started the program back in 2017, we just released them out of the back of the truck. And what we found is the fish were just like booking it out of the streams. They were only spending probably a few hours in the stream and then headed downstream. And so that really, we questioned, wasn't enough time for them to imprint on, say, Y Two Creek, so that when they were adults, they knew how to find their way back and kind of imprinted on that chemical signature. So we looked at what other people were doing in other basins, and people were having a lot of success with acclimation facilities. So we've been, over time, increasing the percentage of fish that we acclimate. And acclimate just means holding them on river water for a couple of weeks prior to release so that they can imprint on those signatures. So up here in the top left, you can see a picture of kind of an industrial-looking acclimation facility. That is a tank loaned to us from the tribes that's operated by ODFW. Can hold about 25,000 Chinook. And Y Two's Creek just runs through it and out the other end. And we keep fishing there for a couple of weeks and then let them go. The bottom two pictures are smaller-scale acclimation sites that PGE has set up in Ochico Creek, as well as in Kids Fishing Pond. So we, we built these net pens where we hold fish in Camp Sherman Kids Fishing Pond. And most recently this year, we expanded to the Primeville Kids Fishing Pond. So it's been kind of a neat partnership because those are the times of year we're usually acclimating in March, when you don't, those fishing ponds aren't open. And so we're kind of double-using that space. And it's a nice protected area where you don't have like the big flows that you could have on the tributaries themselves, but they're still getting imprinted on that water. So this is the first year we were able to get 100% of our fish. So 100,000 Chinook and 100,000 Steelhead acclimated prior to release. The frustrating thing about all this is they're now out at the ocean. And so we have to wait two years until they come back to us to see how well, how well it's working. Next up is water quality. Our water quality program has two major components. One is compliance with state standards, and then the other is sort of the science and management pieces. As far as compliance, we noted in our briefing materials that we're going through the process to modify our 401 certificate. And so kind of the, the very brief history there is that we have 401s from the state and the tribes that show, tell us how to manage to meet state standards in dissolved oxygen, pH, and temperature. And those were issued back in 2002. In 2004, the state standards for dissolved oxygen and temperature changed. And so what we've been doing every year with DEQ is getting an interim agreement to apply the current state standards, so what, what the standard is in 2021, rather than what the standards were in 2002. And rather than go through that annual process every year for the next 30 years, we're working on modifying the actual guiding 401 document. So that is, does involve a public process and a public hearing through DEQ and is something that should be upcoming in the next month or two. And again, it's really just aimed at making those documents more current.
Can you tell, I'm looking at the periphyton samplings. Just, I never even heard that terminology. Can you explain that a little bit? Or is that, is that something you can talk to?
Yeah, so that has to do with the water quality. So periphyton is attached algae. So that's kind of the algae that's growing on the river bottoms. We recently completed the water quality study in 2019. We did a revision of it last year to reflect some laboratory error in how they estimated periphyton. It didn't end up changing the overall conclusions of the study. As far as how we managed the, the project itself, it did change, you know, what we understand about the, the algal community of the Lower Deschutes River. You know, the, the main focus of the study was to look at how we're operating the selective water withdrawal and our water blending with temperature in particular, to figure out if we are operating it in the best way possible when we consider kind of Lower Deschutes River water quality, the reservoir water quality, and fish passage, and trying to make sure we're, we're balancing all those objectives. You know, it's, it again is probably a 500-page report, so lots of details. But kind of summing it up, you know, we are operating the project in a way that does balance those different objectives well. We looked at different blends, and we looked at things like building an algae curtain in Lake Billy Chinook to potentially hold back algae and not let it reach the lower river. That did have some nominal benefits to the lower river, but then it had major tradebacks, trade-offs. So we looked at like the reservoir water quality, which is important for recreation, as well as fish passage. And so we, we tried to take that high-level look. One thing that, you know, the study did point out was that we're increasingly sending downstream into the lower river nutrient-laden Crooked River water at a time at which the algae or the periphyton in the lower river can take advantage of it and grow. And so we have been trying to help address that by addressing sort of, you know, the source of the problem, so to speak, by helping fund efforts in the Crooked River to improve water quality. We helped support the, the Crooked River Water Quality Partnership, which is an effort by FERC County, as well as the irrigators and the NGOs to, to kind of develop solutions to water quality on a local level. And then more recently, we've dedicated our Pelton funding to the Crooked River. So the Pelton Fund is a $26 million fund that was established by the license that is funded by PGE and the tribes to help create better habitat conditions. Because you, you can't do reintroduction with fish passage alone. You gotta have the habitat for the fish. And so in 2020, we had about $6 million available to grant out. And we awarded 4.5 million of that and saved the remaining 1.3-ish million dollars for the Crooked River, because we didn't have applicants at that time for the Crooked River that were well-developed projects. And so we're in process now of reviewing grant applications for that work. And the idea is that, you know, not only do we need, have needs in the Crooked in terms of water quality, but also fish habitat. And most of the adults that are returning, most of the Chinook and the Steelhead are headed to the Crooked River. And thanks to the Deschutes Valley Water District's Opal Springs project, they're now able to access that habitat. So we want to make sure it's, it's in good shape for them. So I'm excited to see where that leads.
Megan, Commissioner Adair, I have a question for you. You said the goal is to get 1,000 per species. But I was wondering, what is the count currently today of the Steelhead and the Sockeye, then? If we know the Chinook count? Are those numbers captured also?
Yeah, so we can definitely send you, you know, the counts over, over time. The Chinook are the only fish that like are returned today and spawning today. So that's why I included them. Sockeye return in July and August. Currently, we have two fish back as of last week. That's hopefully just the beginning of the run. It's a tough year for Sockeye with, with drought conditions and warm conditions throughout the basin. But hopefully we have more coming. Those have ranged from numbers in, you know, the dozens up to our record year was 540 Sockeye. But we only saw that once in 2016. Likewise, Steelhead have bounced around, typically around 50 fish returning per year. I think we've had over 100 a couple of years, but again, lower. And those would start returning this September and return through May.
I used to actually live on a little teeny stream in Woodinville, Washington, that had salmon that would come and spawn in this teeny stream. And I, it's really unfortunate. I don't know which kind. But I just remember it was really an amazing, you know, to see that in this small stream that they actually got there.
Yeah, they're amazing, for sure.
Yeah, the memory, like I love how you're saying they're, you know, to be imprinted and to actually be held in the water seems to, you know, that sounds like really beneficial for your project.
Yeah.
Megan, you were, you were talking about how the majority of the fish are going to the Crooked. Do you, can you give us like a, a sense of proportions on that? And is it, does it vary from species to species? I mean, obviously the Sockeye are mostly going up the Metolius. But the other, the other species, the Chinook and the, and the Steelhead, are they, are they spread among tributaries? Or you, what's the makeup there?
Yeah, and I don't have the exact numbers, but, you know, it's a little higher percentage for Steelhead. But for both Chinook and Steelhead, it's 55 to 70% of the returning fish are going up the Crooked. So a pretty, the higher is Steelhead, because we really don't have any Steelhead production historically out of the Metolius. So, you know, an even split would maybe be 50/50. So they're closer to 70% going up the Crooked. And then for Chinook, you mainly see them going up the Metolius in the Crooked. But again, probably 55% going up the Crooked and a few up the Deschutes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the update. I know that sometimes there's field trips and tours, so keep us in mind. There's been invitations that I haven't been able to respond to, but I appreciate knowing that there's activities. And I sure would like to join you sometimes to see some of the activities that are happening. I think about 10 years ago, I was able to carry a five-gallon bucket of smolts down to the Y Two's Creek and put them in the river. So I wonder what happened to those, but I mean, we've been trying to do this for many years.
So what about the water temperature, though? I remember from a couple of years ago that we were talking about temperature, and I was wondering if you had anything to report today?
Yeah, so this year in particular, with, you know, having record temperatures has been challenging. Our, the whole effort of our water temperature program is to restore seasonal without project temperatures. And so we've been successful in that in terms of shifting the peak temperatures from July into kind of, sorry, shifting them from August and September into July, which is what they were historically before the project was built. And so that is in line with EPA recommendations for kind of providing cooler temperatures in that late summer/fall period when we see the most number of fish migrating through, and in particular, fall Chinook. This year, our, our temperatures at the project peaked at about 62 degrees. That's when it was allowed, 116 in Madras. So they, they remained fairly cool, but it's still one of the warmer years for, for our temperatures at the project, just due to it being a rough year. And we're continuing to look at the flow situation as well, because our flows are lower than they've been before. And, you know, make sure that we're, we're watching that and looking at the low-flow triggers in our license to potentially augment, if needed, for, for fall Chinook this fall.
Thank you so much.
Great.
I did want to add that, go ahead.
Oh, I also wanted to ask about the, the volume of water you're working with. So we've had, you know, we're having a significant drought year this year. We had somewhat of a drought year last year as well. And I know that, you know, that, that the way that that would, that would affect the volume of water you're dealing with in the reservoir is different than the way that, you know, farmers experience it here. I mean, the, the HCP is, is, you know, requiring more water to be left in stream, and which is having an impact on agricultural supply. But, you know, with the drought, agricultural supply is, is way down. So I'm, I'm just curious whether, with all those, those, with all those factors, whether in net, you're ending up with a lot less water in the reservoir? Or whether it's, you know, the reservoir still ends up pretty full? Or how, how that all plays out?
Yeah, so our reservoir did fill this year. So we are not in the kind of similar situation that you're seeing upstream. We are run of the river, and so we kind of pass downstream within 10% of what comes into the project. And so we don't have sort of the same types of storage as you see upstream. We've certainly seen changes with HCP, I think, in terms of the timing of when, when water's coming downstream. And it's still pretty early to understand kind of, you know, long-term, especially since the first year of the HCP was sort of this extreme drought condition, to know how that, that will impact the project. But for the most part, you know, we're run of the river. There are provisions for if we get below 3,000 CFS that we would have to draw down Lake Billy Chinook by about four feet. We've never had to do that, but it's something we're looking at really closely right now because we're at about 3,300, so getting closer than, than is comfortable for sure. But hopefully that answers your question. We're, we're not in the same situation that you're seeing up at Wikiup in Primeville by any means, because we are just run of the river for the most part.
And I'm, I'm curious whether the, the volume coming down the tributaries is, like from, from far up the tributaries, is, is accounting for that? Or, you know, that, for that kind of similar amount over time? Or whether it's, how much does, do, do springs way downstream, close to the reservoir, contribute to the, to the inflow of the reservoir versus, you know, your water that originates way up in the headwaters?
Yeah, the springs are huge, so Opal Springs, I can't remember what the CFS is there, but it's a big contributor in the springs in the Crooked River Canyon. Certainly the Metolius, you know, we have the benefit of that steady, pretty steady stream flow. And then there's about 600 CFS of ungaged tributaries and mainly springs coming in at the reservoir themselves. There are several springs like within the reservoirs. And so I think those, those do play a huge factor in terms of sort of creating more, more stable conditions once you add the Metolius in particular and those Crooked River springs.
Thank you.
Great.
I, just before we end here, I did want to introduce you to the Senior Plant Manager at Pelton Roundbutte, Chad Croft. If you could show your video, Chad, if you're able to, that would be great. He's a member of the PGE team and, again, works hand-in-hand with Megan. And, and certainly, if there's interest for touring or, you know, bringing in a group to come see the facility, then certainly Megan or Chad could help facilitate that option. There you go, Chad. There, I can see you now.
This is your 15 minutes of fame. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks for joining, Lee.
Thank you so much for having us. We're so appreciative that you allowed us to come and speak today. We know you're, you have very busy schedules, and so we're so appreciative. If you do have any follow-up questions, Sharon, who is extraordinary, we're very lucky to have her, feel free to have Sharon send me an email and I'll get it to Megan and Jim and Chad if there's any other follow-up questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Thanks for the update. And this is a long-term partnership and relationship, so it's great to see you, everyone.
And I'm glad to hear that your reservoir was full. So a little better news than some of them.
Yep, great. That old, that old groundwater will hold out for a while, at least. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Well, and yeah, I mean, thanks, staff, for finding that date. I know that was talked about for a while. We just wanted to do it. So we were able to get that scheduled and a good conversation today and a current update on the status of water quality, temperature, volume, flow, and making electricity. Okay, other items?
Commissioner, I think Nick's here to discuss Planning Commission appointment in the South County.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nick Leibach, Community Development Director. I provided some information to you last week, the applications and the materials from the interviews that we had with the two candidates. And Planning Commission Chair Les Hudson, Board Chair Commissioner DeBoe and myself. We interviewed the two candidates for the position. Both interviewed very well, and we unanimously recommended Tony Williams, who's lived in Southern Deschutes County for about 20 years and visited since the 1970s, as she shared with us. And I provided a copy of her, again, her application and her letter of interest. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I do have it here available if you are interested in reviewing it. And so it's just, it's a discussion for the board to either, we could either direct us to bring it back for a formal board, board appointment at a subsequent meeting, or you may be able to have a, even a minutes motion today. I would defer to Dave on that, but it's, it's really your call.
So the first step is, yeah, this is a recommendation of the effort that I went through. So, you know, we've done this before where if, if you'd like, you know, you could have an opportunity to interview also. So, you know, that's the first step of this process. Or if you'll take the recommendation from the committee that the three of us put together. You know, Ms. Williams really engaged, very energetic. She's, she's all over the community and the county, you know. She's a resident and a small business owner, so she's all over the place. So I was really pleased, as I say, but both candidates, very engaged, very motivated to be, you know, community service, jumping in on a planning commission. Both of them had that attitude of wanting to provide community service and be engaged.
Excellent. Oh, it was unanimous.
Well, as I say, for the three that were involved.
Oh, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for both of them for applying.
Any thoughts?
Seems like a workable process.
Okay. So it looks like, yeah, recommendation. So it looks like, yeah, recommendation made and received. So at this point, is a minutes motion today or a future meeting? Either way.
Do it that way, certainly. In the past, we've just brought them back and put it on your consent agenda at a later meeting, but whatever your pleasure is.
They go on Wednesday's agenda then, or is it too late for that? Yes, isn't it?
Yeah, when's the next planning commission?
The next planning commission meeting is on August 12th. But she shared with us, there's only a couple of dates over the next couple of years she can't make it, and next week is one of those. So it's, time is not of the essence. So if it's, it's whatever the board is comfortable with.
Well, yeah, so let's put it on a future board meeting, but we can acknowledge that they have, the board is willing and able to accept that nomination and we will be proceeding, so you can let her know that. And then we'll, we'll just put, put the welcome letter on a future meeting. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for following through with that process.
Next one, you were asked, Commissioner DeBoe, to sign a letter last week in support of a TGM grant application to the state for some master planning work in the central area of Lapine, the new neighborhood area. Because of a timing, we asked you to sign that. We didn't have a meeting last Wednesday because of the fair opening, so this would be to kind of.
Yeah, so acknowledging that. So, yeah, there's a letter, it's a letter of recommendation and support for the city of Lapine to DLCD for a technical assistance grant in support of a new neighborhood planning effort for, which is county-owned land. So this would be the moment, I'll make a motion of support, since I already signed the letter, if there's support for that and you can acknowledge the letter that we had. So there's a copy of it.
And commissioners, I would just acknowledge that the letter is very similar to the one that we signed last year. So it wasn't, because of the similarity, we didn't feel that it was going to pose too much of a issue to present, to redraft essentially the same letter and just have the, the chair sign it.
Now, did we ask for 250,000 last year?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. So, okay, well, maybe we have a better opportunity to, to actually get a grant then for the 175,000. I know it's extremely competitive and I guess we learned there were a few things that we could do better, so hopefully Lapine will be granted that.
Yeah. So as I say, I have made that motion since I signed it, so just.
Well, I'm just saying, yes.
Is there a second?
Seventy five, I'll second it.
Okay, yeah.
I would love to see it.
Oh, okay.
And it's been signed already, so.
Yep. As I said, just one. Okay, so calling for the vote, is there any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. So that's for the minutes. So then the follow-on concept there is, remember, I think we have already discussed the fact that it would be time to proceed, kind of, if that comes through or not, as in, is there a relationship with the city of Lapine where we, and from a board point of view is, would want to give a little bit more direction to this, as in, if the city of Lapine needs resources to do code changes or, or code review, would we want to possibly partner and fund either reimbursement from those dollars or reimbursement from future sales? So that would basically just empower us to know that we're going to move forward one way or another. As I say, this is a policy decision at this point, and maybe, Tom, if you can help me clarify it better, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not standing by twiddling our thumbs waiting just in case somebody helps to pay for something, that if there's action, that it's going to happen, you know?
Yeah, Commissioner, there appears to be some motivation with the city to want to do some master planning efforts there to chart their future and, and have a vision for what that central area of the city might look like. We've, we've had some difficulty in the past in kind of struggling when people have approached us to purchase land, which have been kind of one-offs on whether that, you know, those concepts that have been presented to us kind of fit within the overall long-term vision for what ought to go in that middle portion. So we've advocated for some time to have at least some kind of framework so we can assess land purchase requests or other development requests that come to us as the property owner, whether that fits within the vision. So having some clarity, I think the city certainly has embraced that product, that concept now also and would like to work with us to kind of establish that vision, whether it's a, you know, 175 or $250,000 very detailed, very comprehensive master plan, or even just, you know, a simpler framework. I, you know, I think there's different ways to accomplish what it is we're seeking in terms of having a, a path forward, you know, a vision for that, for that land. So we've, Christie has had conversations with the city manager in Lapine, and I know Commissioner DeBoe has spoken to the mayor about that. So we're not exactly, we don't have an ask in front of you today. We don't have a, a precise dollar amount for, for a specific project should this grant application not go through. And we're unable to fund at least the, the overall detailed master plan study that's contemplated as part of the grant application, but there may be some other things that I think would lend itself very well to a joint meeting with the city council to explore what those alternative options might look like in terms of hiring some expertise to do some visioning or, you know, kind of like a planning charrette that, you know, Nick and Peter Gatauski have experienced with in CDD to kind of throw some different concepts out there with local stakeholders to come up with a, a vision or a draft vision or two, to, for that land, which, you know, are all, you know, potential concepts or ideas that, that gets us closer to having a, a longer-term vision for that land. So it, it may be a while before we hear on the TGM grant, so we can, you know, are certainly willing to, to further those conversations that we've had with the city on what those options might be. And, and I think we're probably due for a joint meeting with the city council, which we could work to kind of scope something up as an agenda discussion for that meeting.
Well, and that would be helpful. So I think, yeah, if we have it, if we put it on an agenda item for a joint meeting, then there'll be preparation for that agenda item, and then we can kind of clarify how we're going to proceed from there. So I'm just letting you know, I mean, I'm motivated to, you know, start to move, whatever that looks like. And, and as I say, we know that there's value there and there's willing, you know, developers. We've already been approached for, you know, somebody wants to basically, you know, pre-commit us to sell them something and they'll help us plan it too. So, you know, that was one of the concepts. So there's the markets out there.
So, but we're not talking about spending some, spending money prior to getting, prior to receiving an announcement of, of the, this grant competition?
Well, I'm, I'm pointing out that if it's the willing, will of this board, that we're going to proceed with or without those dollars. So, I mean, with those dollars, there'll be, the state will help us pay for planning, but if it doesn't come, somebody's going to proceed. The market's push, there's pressure out there right now. So why, why wait for a grant announcement? And I'm not offering specific amount right now, just like Tom's at, I don't have a proposal. I'm just, what's the willing of the board? That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
I, I guess what I'm asking about is, many grant programs, many grant programs say that if you expend, you know, if you expend dollars on your project prior to award, then they're not, they're not eligible for reimbursement anymore. So I just, I'm trying to understand whether we're, we're talking about, because, and there's a lot of stuff that you can do, you know, developing a, a request for proposals, you know, running like solicitation, all that. I mean, that, you could, you could still do all that stuff in the time while you're waiting for an award announcement, but like, if, if the grant does come through, we don't want to preclude ourselves from, from being able to be reimbursed.
It seems like that grant didn't take that long to find out the answers. It's pretty fast, isn't it? Maybe even September or something? I don't, you know?
Could be.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. And I do believe we've hopefully learned a lot last, with last year's application, so maybe we will be successful. But yes, I hear what you're saying, and Lapine is really the location for a lot of new home construction, so whatever we can do.
Yeah, and I, I'm not saying that I'm not supportive of moving forward whether the grant comes through or not. I'm just trying to figure out that the, the schedule of what we would be doing when to, you know, to not, you know, not impact our ability to, to use the grant funds if we get them.
And, yeah, so I guess, and that was my thought, is let's start doing anything and everything, and fine, I mean, let's not go spend money that we could get reimbursed for and, and disqualify ourselves for that, but let's not wait for the grant either and wait, wait to find out if we're funded or not. You know, let's start to do whatever we can.
Well, I think we should set up the meeting. I think that's the most important thing to do today, to set up that meeting. What is it, where's, maybe perhaps meeting with Van City Council on the 2nd of September? So hopefully there'll be some time in there that we can set up that meeting, you know, just to get together.
Before September 2nd, so because this is the beginning of the?
Yeah, I know. If we have time, then it's two, couple of weeks.
Three weeks from now, maybe?
Yes.
Or if that's even?
That's a possibility. Maybe they could come up today, right? No, I mean, you know, it's.
Or whatever. We'll see. As I say, I didn't, I'm not here to put too much structure to it. I was just making sure we're leaning into it instead of waiting. That's really the only concept I was trying to.
No, I think it's excellent. Let's get together with them ASAP.
I mean, it seems like the most important thing is, is for us to identify what dollars we're going to use to pay for, pay for this if the grant doesn't come through and.
And this is for the cities, cities' planning efforts?
Yeah, but it's for our land. I mean, you know, and, and this will, because, I mean, is our, are, are you all anticipating that the city would, would pay for it? Or are you anticipating that we would pay for it? I mean, I would, I would guess that.
Just trying to let staff, let, you know, take a position that we're moving forwards today instead of waiting for a response from that. Maybe that's all we want to do.
Okay.
Yes, because I don't have much more clarity either.
Yeah, no, as I mean, maybe that means, yeah. I'm already jumping ahead to like, what, what are the nuts and bolts of that? But I, I guess if, if just kind of giving staff direction to move, move full speed ahead with a, an understanding that as needed, we will figure out a way to pay for, you know, pay for this.
There'll be decision points along the way.
Okay.
Does that help? I mean, you know, just kind of, yeah. So there you go. Thank you. I think we got to what, what I was looking for too. Okay.
Commissioners, I had one last item. The, I sent you all a note on Friday last week, Thursday or Friday. We've been scoping potential homeless camp in the Redmond area for the board's previous direction and would like the city of Redmond's help in, in doing some preliminary planning, scoping, answering some initial questions. And so I prepared a letter that, for the commission to send to the Redmond City Council that formally requests that assistance from the city, not, not committing any dollar amounts or any land or anything else. It's just asking for their involvement in, in seeing what's possible and doing some preliminary scoping with, particularly from the city's perspective with respect to land use regulation, zoning, utilities, traffic and so forth. So you've got, I think, a draft in front of you. There's initial.
No, I don't have a copy of it. I know you gave me one earlier today and it went into a different pile.
I did.
Oh, yeah, okay, good. So I didn't, two of us are in that spot, yeah.
I didn't bring mine down, but I, I read it.
I just had a question.
Thank you so much.
Tom, in Redmond alone, more than 200 people, does that include the people out in Antler too? The county property out east, east of town? That 200 number?
Yeah, Commissioner, that number came from the city. I'm not.
I know, I know.
Exactly what it includes, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I didn't, did talk with Colleen Thomas today and she did, we did come up with the number that we believe there's 1,500 homeless in the county. So that was, that was her number today, just for a point. So this 200 looks fine. I actually prefer your letter, the potential modification, one that you gave to us.
I, I do as well.
So, and, yeah, so content-wise says, "We are motivated to discuss the development of a managed camp facility slash village on county property within the Redmond city limits." So it may be and/or village, so it kind of includes, instead of just a slash is what I'm thinking, is one specific feedback. Because the definition of, the definition of these things is still to be determined, as in, we're using words, we haven't seen it on the ground, and what, you know, what, what might be in anybody's head when you hear the words could be very different. So this is, you know, it's going to be tricky right now. The terminology is going to be interesting.
Yeah, no, you're exactly right. And, and we don't have a finalized vision of what this might look like. That's the purpose of these initial discussions, is to see what's possible and see what might be doable. If it, is it possible to accomplish all that in one location? Or would it be either necessary or practical to, you know, have different sites for different types of uses?
Well, as I say, and the version one of something that we put on the ground is going to probably, you know, as soon as it gets, as soon as you say, okay, let's start this, there'll be a version two right behind it, as in, this didn't work last night, so tomorrow it's going to be different. So as I say, it's going to be a step evolutionary process in what are we even doing here? So also, I'd, I'd like to promote to kind of engage staff towards solutions and then mention match our investments second. So just kind of turn that sentence upside down. Because being able to communicate and, as I say, just terminology definition and, you know, sketching out something on a napkin at this point in time and say, does this look reasonable, is different than even having to pay for it. So I'd like to, you know, ask that engagement with the staff, you know, and planning, land use is, is authorized. And then, you know, we can also say, please join us in our investments. Just a little bit of wordsmithing.
That's fine. I mean, I, I think the, the encouragement to, to consider co-investing with us is, is really important, but if it goes first or second, I think it's fine.
Yeah, just the way I view it, yeah.
I mean, but, you know, most importantly, both the board and the Redmond City Council got to hear about some very well-formulated proposals over the last weeks and months, kind of envisioned within the city of Redmond. And I see this letter and kind of this ask as being, you know, a first baby step forward in hopefully a, a partnership between the county and this, and the city to make some things happen that are going to put a dent in, in the homelessness challenge in our region. So, so if, you know, if this is sort of, you know, an extending of the hand, I'm really excited to see us do that.
It's not only to make things actually better for them, but also safer for our community this year. I think that with our drought conditions and the number of fires that have started in Deschutes County, we desperately need to move the homeless to safer locations so that we're not, well, we are on constant alert, honestly. I don't know if we'll get out of it unless we have a really wet winter, but it's really been, the fires have been overwhelming, so.
Yeah. It'll be better, it'll be better for those people experiencing homelessness and better for everyone else in the community if they're in a managed setting, a planned, managed, authorized setting.
Okay. I'll, we'll make those modifications. If you'd like to bless the, you know, that concept and modify, then we can.
Is there a motion to send this letter, as in mostly the final version format?
I'm, I move that we approve and sign and send this letter to the Redmond City Council.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Great, thank you.
I did want to acknowledge that the Bethlehem Inn Shelter is a high-barrier shelter, and I do believe that that's a good way to go. So I, I thank Bethlehem Inn for stepping up with their program.
So at this time, we'll take another 45 minutes, just so in debrief from the county fair. No, I'm joking.
Oh, I do have one.
Yeah, I know, there's all kinds of stuff we've been doing this week.
Okay, I do want to say in between 1.25 million with the auction for our 4H and FFA kids in the county plus add-ons. So perhaps up to as much as 1.5, but sitting in that room, seeing people that were raising their paddle to buy a steer that's going to cost them up to 10,000. to cost them up to $10,000, and that wasn't the grand champion, is an enormous investment in the youth. And I, as a, you know, 10-year forager, I, I know what it meant to me. It helped put me through college. So I, I really thank those businesses. It hasn't been easy on a lot of those. I mean, you know, they've, a lot of those have struggled to get through the last 18 months, and it was an amazing support. So thank you. Thank you, Candy. Thank you, Jeff. Yes, and definitely we were shorthanded in many spots, but the rodeo was really full. It was slammed on Saturday night. Everything was full. So, thank you.
Yeah. Any thoughts or observations?
I, I'm really glad that we were able to have that community event and community gathering. That means, it, yeah, has a lot of meaning to, to so many people, and it's just a, you know, a lot of different ways to enjoy yourself and connect with your community. And, and so I was very excited to participate in the fair this year.
But I very, yeah, very much appreciated just being out there, seeing everybody. A lot of, you know, majority by far was outdoors, so we were really trying to, you know, keep it safe in time of COVID. It is that awkward time where it's kind of the verge of not knowing if it's going to be coming back, the numbers going up. But everybody was having a good time. I want to thank the vendors that were there. They, everybody was under staff. You could see it. And temp agencies weren't quite available at the levels we wanted also. So a lot of hard work by dedicated individuals, but everybody had a good time also. Yeah, the businesses that helped bid the animals up for 4Hers and FFA were just wonderful. Thank you so much for all that out there. And just the social time, you know, I was out in the back all week with the families and the kids, the 4Hers and everything. And the social time with the kids, just the camaraderie of the community out there was very important and valuable, instead of just doing everything remote, you know, just for the young childhood development opportunities that we saw out there. And seeing just the whole cross-section of humanity coming through the gates. What a great time all week long, so. Okay.
I watched a lot of the pig judging, because really, I only briefly showed a pig when I was in grand championship. And, you know, there's a real art to it, and how to keep your pig happy. So I'm hoping next year...
Without, yeah, smacking them hard.
Yeah, like, please, don't...
Red marks, yeah.
But next year, I actually mentioned this to Tom. I think we need to improve the air conditioning system for the swine barn, because even with fans above them, a lot of those pigs looked incredibly hot. So, anyway, you know, I think...
It's always like that.
Commissioner, you also told me we need bacon next year, so...
Oh, bacon, yes. For the employee breakfast, I go, truly bacon. I mean, there's so many things I only eat with bacon.
Pre-cook those pigs, huh?
Oh, my goodness.
Yes. Well, yeah, I think bacon's really...
Well, and, so then, you know, this was basically the project, since, you know, last year didn't even happen. There was, there was definitely some animals and auction last year.
We had the auction, yeah, it was great.
Yeah, yeah, animals and auction last year, but the numbers were down this year, and that's probably artificial. So, I mean, we could probably see a lot more activity if the economy's opening up and people are more comfortable, too. So we got to even plan for bigger, bigger fair events.
I mean, grain is so expensive now. I buy some grain sacks, 50 pounds, and it's $34 a bag, unless you can find a special deal. So you really have an enormous investment if you've been grain-feeding your steer for months.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's, you know, so definitely, maybe they're getting $10,000, but their, their profit is, is impacted by the price of grain. Apparently, corn now, because of the ethanol, corn, you know, I said the other day, Yuma Tilla County is full of cornfields now because it's up to, what, $7 a bushel, or it's huge. So, and that costs more to feed your animals.
Okay, anything else? Any other items?
The one other thing I'd, I'd mention is that the, the Oregon MPO Consortium met last week, and I, I participated in that meeting. They went over their, their, you know, legislative policy goals for the year, and, and that document would be available if anyone wants to see it. There was also a really extensive conversation about rail crossings for roads, for paths and trails and things like that. And, you know, I'm not tracking any, any particular proposals right now where, where we're running into challenges with crossing Burlington Northern Santa Fe, but I know that it's, I know it's been a thing in the past. So, yeah, I mean, but, I mean, we keep a bizarre timeout, right, until...
Well, so, let me just follow up. Pardon me for stepping in. But ODOT is doing the parallel, you know, four-lane road efforts right now down to the end of the forested land, the federal land down there. So my, my thought is, once they get that project done, hopefully WICUP will just be scheduled to come back online. So I, you know, if, if it ever comes around, go ahead and mention that, you know, it's like, when they put it back in the stick. Because I got to imagine they can, if the intention is there and it's funded, they can design whatever the solution needs to be done, now that we know what the problem was, because you could just put different footings in or make it float and not sink, or, you know, there's design options there. But X amount of money, who knows how much.
Yeah.
But sorry, get back to the MPO.
So the MPO folks were, I think they were mostly dealing with problems where, you know, they're trying to bring a path to the rail, and then, and then, you know, literally cross it, as opposed to go over or under, or the kind of large engineered solution that, that be dealing with on, with Highway 97. But still, there's, there's, there was some, there was a lot of very useful and valuable experience among that group. So but as we, as we hear about other rail crossing, you know, questions, there's, there's people that call on to kind of give us their, give us some background.
Can't just push a button for a walkway rapid flashing beacon to stop the train, I guess.
Uh-uh.
Yeah.
No, the, yeah, the rails, you know, the rails were kind of, I mean, they were, they were given, they were given rights and property a long, long time ago. So it's pretty hard to kind of, you know, essentially butt, butt in on their, butt in on their corridor.
Once you get that much mass moving, you probably don't want to stop it, and it costs a lot of money to stop it, too.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Well, the other industry, though, that's incredibly impacted at the moment is truckers. There's not enough truckers. People aren't getting, talk to restaurant owners. They're not getting their food supplies from trucking. Yeah, that industry, you know, you see interesting things that are not on the grocery shelves now.
At least the corn dog supply showed up at the fair, though, right?
They were fabulous. Loved my corn dog.
Yep.
Yes, one, you know, at least one a year, right? I don't think I had one last year.
Just Kathy had a split one.
We had a split one last year.
Anything else?
Sounds good.
Yeah, exactly.
There was the Emergency Homeless Task Force meeting also last week with the city event, but I, I think you all have, I've got some briefing about that already.
Yeah, Tom's sharing, because he's there with you, so he shared some information. Yeah, so one of my thoughts is, currently with the managed camps and the different efforts that are going on, understanding who's going to be an operator, as in, if, if we have a managed camp, you know, there's service providers, there's community services, but then, you know, the operator, the person that, or entity, that, you know, just kind of the manager, the person that's the first line of observation and coordination.
Yeah.
So that's, that's going to be some actions that we, everybody's going to be involved in that here in the near future, who's operating. Anything else from you, Commissioner?
No, thank you.
Okay, that's all I have. Seeing nothing else, meeting adjourned.